Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 6th, 2018. Please rise for the invocation and the flag salute. Mr. Herron is leading our flag salute.
All right. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Palmer, would you pray for us?
Let's pray. Dear the Father, thank you for this sitting. Thank you for these wonderful people. Guide us and direct us in all that we say and do tonight. Help us to have a spirit of courtesy and professionalism and allow us to listen and learn and to apply what we need to do tonight. Thank you for this forum that we have to make progress in Bethany. We pray all these things in your precious name, Jesus' name.
Item one tonight is a consent docket A through D. Do I have a motion or any questions or comments?
I move approval.
Please cast your votes. Item two is a presentation from the Cemetery Task Force.
My name is Stephanie Bernithy and I am the chairman for the Cemetery Task Force. We began our first meeting by taking a tour of the cemetery to come up with a list of items that needed to be repaired or updated. We then separated those items up into three different phases based on priority. Phase number one was going to be focusing on the exterior, phase number two, the interior, phase number three, future expansion. We began phase one by hiring a local design team to help put our ideas onto paper. Those ideas consisted of upgrading the fence, permanently closing down the south fence on Rockwell, just completely closing that down since it hasn't been functioning for quite some time, making the far north entrance an overflow gate for only using whenever we have funerals there, and then upgrading the corner of Rockwell and 63rd, the sign there, and creating two main prominent entrances, one off of Rockwell and one off of 63rd. And then lastly, adding a pavilion for the flag that we have currently there. When we began this program or this process, we sent out several plans to several contractors in hopes that we would be getting numbers back fairly quickly. It took us until December before we were ever received an actual legit bid or estimate, excuse me. Whenever we received that back, we realized that our plans and our dreams were more expensive or more cost efficient than or costly than what we had expected. So now we are currently at the process of looking, taking reevaluation of what we had planned and coming up with a Plan B for our phase one. Plan B is going to consist of cost-saving options for consideration, which would be substituting materials that we currently had, which I believe we had brick pavers first. Now we're looking at possibly going to just brick and using some stucco paint to cover it. Then we also talked about possibly reducing the size of the entrances that we had, making them smaller, maybe not as wide, but still being able to get that same effect that we're looking for in our idea. Then number three, if those didn't work in helping reduce in costs, we would look at maybe prioritizing and rephasing this fence out in order for us to still be able to achieve that look that we're looking for. And then lastly, worst-case scenario would be eliminating some elements, which along the fenceway, we have some columns and we have some masonry work that is increasing our cost. So we're looking at ways to try to trim that down and still be able to provide an elegant look for the cemetery. Basically, we don't want to put a fence there. We don't want to put a sign there and just kind of refresh what we currently have. We want to beautify our town. This is the first and last thing that you see off of Rockwell. And not only is that a prominent entry and exit for Rockwell, for the city of Bethany, but we're also, this is a place for us to grieve. This is a place for us to remember our loved ones and for us to be able to go and have some sort of serenity whenever you go there. And when you first pull into the cemetery, you just really don't get that vibe. So that's it.
Thank you. If you're on the Cemetery Task Force and you're here, can you stand up? Thank you for serving on this and we're excited to see this thing all come together and thank you for the work and the effort that you guys have put in for this. I appreciate it.
Any questions?
Stephanie, thank you for being here. I know getting up here and presenting all this information, I thought you did a great job and I just had some follow-up questions. The initial cost estimate that you received, can you tell me what that was?
It ranged from between $290,000 to $300,000. So it was quite a bit up there.
Okay.
We didn't expect that. Of course, we didn't have the foresight of how much the materials would cost.
Right. So I guess, is there a plan to get alternative estimates?
Yes.
Okay.
We are currently, we are seeking out some additional help from various contractors to see if we can get ways to minimize, like I had discussed, to where we're not, maybe not so grand, not so bold, but still being able to get that luxurious or that elegant look that we're looking for.
And the interior improvements, that would be related to the flagpole and the pavilion area?
No, the interior improvements, let me go back up to that slide. I don't know if you can see it very well. We noticed some drainage issues and some landscaping issues and that would be phase number two. We had hoped that our phase one wasn't going to be so expensive and that we would be able to roll over into phase two fairly quickly. So phase two would consist of the drainage issues and the landscaping issues that we have.
Now, it's my understanding that there has been allocated funds for this that have been sitting there for a long time.
Yes.
To the extent, do you know what that amount is?
We were originally told $152,000.
Okay. And so...
And that's what our goal was, is to try to get it hopefully underneath that amount.
Right. So that's the project that you're working on now to get to that point?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. This has been a long time coming. I mean, there has not been a change at that cemetery for, I think we can safely say, 15 years.
Wow.
And this is a part of Bethany. It's a part of Ward Two that can be a representation of Bethany, not only for the families and the residents, but for the public going by that intersection. And it really will say a lot when we get it taken care of, to the extent it'll reaffirm what we know, but other people don't know about the quality of life that we have here in Bethany and what a great place it is to live.
I agree.
So I thank you for your service and if I've encouraged you or the committee to get to that point, please continue to do the good work and we look forward to finding out what you come up with next.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to say that I appreciate the history in that cemetery and I know my hometown has a history walk every year as they go through the cemetery and explain who those people were and it's just become kind of a neat thing. So John Martin knows, I always brought that up a lot. But I'd love to see us someday have a history walk and tell who all those people were in our history because there's some pretty important people in there. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I have a question for the council. What's, not that you necessarily have to answer unless you want to, but what's the priority on this, your heartbeat or your pulse as far as the funds that have been allocated versus what we as a council may be able to add to if we wanted to with budget coming up, which obviously is an ongoing discussion?
I think my opinion is that this has been a long time coming and it needs to be done. Funds have been allocated for this project for years and apparently have never been spent. And now we have participation from the residents of Bethany who want to, one, be a part of the process and, two, come up with a solution that we all appreciate. So with that initiative, I think the council should seriously consider allocating additional funds above and beyond $152,000 that has been in that account for years.
I concur with that, Steve. Stephanie, thank you very much. I have loved ones, my wife's entire family's resting there. So it means a lot to me, that place does. So Steve, I agree with that thought. If, you know, if we need to get something done and maybe allocate some money, a little bit more money to get something accomplished, to make it look the way you ladies put out up there, I like the way that looked. That's just my opinion, but maybe that's something we need to talk about, Mr. Mayor.
I could shed a little bit wider on that. I believe that the $152,000 was appropriated from your regular budget, either capital improvement or otherwise. Yes, why don't you? But there's two sources of funds is what I was going to say.
Our, the actual balance on our cemetery trust fund is $201,000 and we did not budget that entire amount because it is a trust fund and there are continuing obligations that we've got to be prepared to address. However, this city has constantly reinvested in taking care of the cemetery as a part of our routine budget. So while state law does require that 17% of our sales of cemetery lots go there, we're doing that plus going the extra mile of doing the maintenance ourselves. So with that in mind, this would be something you could easily add to with the upcoming budget and we can do that.
JR.
JR.
Quick question. Do we have some money, is it monthly or annually that goes, continues to go into that fund?
No.
Okay.
This is not, not a, that's why I was judicious in saying we can spend $150 and I'm comfortable with that.
Right.
That's funded by lot sales, a percentage of the lot sales.
Okay.
How many lots do we still have available for sale? More or less? Anybody know?
I have a question. Is the maintenance of the property in the city budget to provide for mowing, upkeep and this sort of thing? So the $150,000 or so, 152,000 you have is actually uncommitted funds that can be used for this particular purpose. And we have another $50,000 or so that is our, the funds that we maintain for the state, the state requires us to maintain that 17%.
That 17% could also be, can be spent for maintenance or improvements. So it could be spent for this project as well.
Okay. So we can probably fund this project without doing anything else?
Yeah. Your options would be to increase the amount from the trust fund for this project or to budget capital improvement funds for it, I would say, because it'd be your option.
One last thing. I would concur with what everyone has said, that we do need to think about putting some money into the budget toward this. I asked for this committee to be formed. It wasn't my idea. I had a couple of people in this room, kind of twisted my arm a little bit, gave me some information. I asked for it. It is in the comprehensive plan as a gateway and so I'm, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Are you good?
Thank you.
I have a question, if you would please. I heard you say something about future expansion. What's your thoughts in that regard because we will be out of lots at some point in time?
Right. I believe we have close to 400 lots still available, but one of the things that we had discussed as a team was possibly putting a columbarium there. That's one of the reasons why we closed off that south entrance on Rockwell. There is, I'm not 100% sure if this would fit perfectly, but there is that stretch of road that we could possibly put a columbarium there. So that was our thoughts for the future expansion.
Our cemetery does allow for two persons to be buried in the same gravesite.
Did you say it does allow?
Lack of a better word, stacking.
Yeah.
And so that may become more common in the future as well.
What are you calling that structure that could be built on that stretch of road? A column, something?
A columbarium.
Okay. That's something that you could, is there like a little hallway inside? You can walk inside or is that a bigger, that's a bigger project?
I think it might be a little bigger project with the hallway inside.
You're thinking small, a smaller scale.
If you've ever been out to Rose Hill Cemetery off Classen, they have an area of that cemetery that is like a garden area with benches and then it has a masonry wall with the boxes for the cremated remains that had, the boxes are, you know, like that big. So it doesn't take a lot of space to have a lot of containers.
I believe we did get a rough estimate and it was going to be about $300,000 for putting in a columbarium as well. So that was something that would definitely be a future.
How much did you say?
Around $300,000 and that's just a rough estimate. We didn't get sizes or anything.
Did they happen to say how many it would house?
We didn't get that information.
We don't know. Okay.
I appreciate it. I would be interested in having this, carrying this conversation on in our budget talks about looking into allocating more funds, capital improvement funds. Item three is a presentation of 2017 financial audit report by Casey Russell of Russell and Williams CPA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody should have a copy, hopefully. I'll do a rough presentation and take any questions. Pages one and two, this is the actual audit opinion. This is an unqualified opinion. It doesn't get any better than that. It means your financial statements are in total conformance with the accounting rules. So we can't, we can't do any better than that. Page three is our statement of net position. It's assets and liabilities and the net position at the end of the year. Total unrestricted cash, that's money for light bulbs and payroll, $7,661,000. Restricted cash, $10,630,000. That's bond money, money set aside for debt service, those types of things. Investments, $4,864,000. That's basically unrestricted money there. Total assets, $66,181,000. The bulk of that, as you can see, is capital assets, net of depreciation of $35 million. We have liabilities of $33 million, which gives you equity of $34,692,000. Your accounts payable, that first number in the liabilities and the accrued salaries and taxes, $100,000, roughly a million dollars in current liabilities, but you have $7,661,000 of cash to pay that million dollars of liabilities. Basically a seven to one. You had $7 of cash to pay every dollar of current liabilities. That's a good current ratio. It's a good number. We like that. Overall, a good-looking balance sheet. The pension liability that you see, that's $6,597,000, that is somewhat of a phantom number in that that is the unfunded pension liability for your firefighters, your police and Oakland Municipal Retirement Fund. The smallest of those would be the OMRF. The biggest will be the firefighters, which is a very, it's a state-funded plan, it's a state-sponsored plan, but because of the peculiarities of the accounting rules, we get to show this liability even though we will never have to pay it. So it sits here, it uglies up our balance sheet, but we're never going to have to pay it. So I point that out because it's a little, it's a little hard to put that on as an accountant when I know it's not real, but I have to. So there it is. It makes our balance sheet look a little uglier. Other than that, though, it's a good-looking balance sheet. Can't complain. Page four, and if anybody had a question while I'm talking, just dive right in, it won't bother me a bit. Page four is this, it's basically an income statement. We call it a statement of activities. It reads from left to right and down. These first, this first section up here is the governmental section. The middle section is proprietary funds, Public Works Authority and the hospital authority primarily. And the bottom section is a catch-all. And as you go out here to the fourth column, you see all those negative numbers in that governmental section. We expect to see that because you don't charge for streets, you don't charge for fire, you don't charge for police. So you're going to have expenses without a whole lot of offsetting revenues against that to give you that negative number. But as you slide your finger down, we pick up all of our tax revenue number and all of a sudden that brings that back into a positive number of $100, excuse me, $1,641,000. And that's with depreciation expense included in the expenses, which I'll point out in a moment. The same thing applies to your business activities. These are all positive numbers over here. The only negative we have is where we're shifting money out of our proprietary funds over into our governmental funds. It's just an operational thing. It's a left pocket, right pocket thing. Nothing to be concerned with. The overall best number here is at $1,888,000 down in the final quarter, corner, excuse me, net, basically net profit, for lack of a better way of putting it. So it's an excellent year. Our balance sheet looks nice and strong. We're pulling in a little more resources than what we're, than what we're spending, which is what we want. Otherwise, we couldn't fund the city. Page five, these are the governmental funds without the proprietary funds. This is the old way of doing it. This is the way we did it back in the dark ages when I first got into public accounting. These are, you don't see any fixed assets here and you don't see any long-term debt, which is the way we used to do it, but we reconcile these fund balance sheets back to the first balance sheet down here below. So you can take a highlighter and highlight numbers on both of them and find both sets of numbers. So it's just an oddity of the presentation model that we have to deal with. The same thing is applying on page six. How much time do I have? They only gave me three minutes in Ardmore last night.
Okay, three minutes. No, I'm kidding. Whatever you need.
Well, I had an egg timer last night, so. This is an income statement. Once again, this is the old-fashioned way of doing it and this is money in, money out. This is cash in the door and cash going out the door, which in a way I think is a better way of presentation because it shows you, what's happening with your real money. But once again, we reconcile it, this income statement with the left hook, with this little section down below. You can, as you take this home, and everybody's going to take this home and look it over tonight, right? I'm not seeing a lot of heads nod in here. It's a little discouraging, I'm sorry. But you'll find that those two, those two sets of numbers will reconcile between the two. Page seven, this is just the proprietary funds, Bethany Public Works and the hospital. It's a balance sheet, it's broken out. You can see where all the cash is and where all the liabilities. The hospital ended up the year with $2,997, PWA with a $1,110 in unrestricted cash. Of course, we have restricted cash over here in Bethany Public Works. That's bond money, that's debt money, that's meter money, all kinds of different types of cash that we're restricting. The other asset that I will point out is the lease settlement, $1,676,000. That's the net present value of that $200,000 annuity that you're getting from Integris. I cannot remember how many years we've got left on that, but that's taking that $200,000 payment and sucking the interest out of it and bringing it down to what it's worth today. Not a lot of liabilities on the public, the hospital side. That $2,384,000, that's basically money that the present tenant has spent over there that we're going to, we're going to give them a break on their lease is what that is. So it's not really a liability we're going to have to write a check for, it's just we're not going to get revenues for it. Other than that, public works, net position, $28 million. So just like the big balance sheet, a good-looking balance sheet, very solid, can't complain about this. Just a shortened income statement for the proprietary funds on page eight. Not a lot to talk about, basically the same type of a situation. You go to page nine, though, this is the cash flow statement. This is the one I really like because that very first subtotal right there that you see, cash flow from operations is what you want. You always want to have positive cash flow from operations with this type of an organization. It means the money you generate is paying for your operations and that's what we want. This is something Enron never had, okay? That's an old joke. Went kind of flat, too. Other than that, the footnotes are dry, tedious reading. If you have trouble sleeping at night, you might crack this open. On page 20, we talk about fixed assets and you can see the beginning balances, increases, decreases. But on page 20, you'll see the $449,000 worth of depreciation expense. So in the governmental funds, that net income, we had $449,000 worth of depreciation expense, including those expenses, spread out between those areas you see down below on page 20. Management finance, 27, police, 98, general government, which is like this building, stuff like that, 185,000. We get the same type of information over on page 21. Depreciation inside the Public Works Authority of $1,372,000. The bulk of that, I believe, is over on the hospital side or a big chunk of it. But still, when you look at that net income on the hospital side, we had $1,372,000 worth of depreciation. That doesn't cost us any money. We didn't write a check for it. It's just systematic bookkeeping entry of writing the assets down. So, and it's spread out between, oh, excuse me, yes, I was wrong. Water, 638, sewer, 309, hospital, 423. I misspoke. Past that, we start talking about our long-term debt. On page 23, we've got a summary, a summarization of all of our various debt issues. The 2012 refunding bonds, $2,250,000, utility bonds, $8 million, water bonds or water debt, $3,404, deferred lease revenue, $2,600,000, and then the GOs for the hospital, $8 million. And all that will pay off sometime around 2032. So we can all look forward to that day and we can maybe pop a bottle of champagne or something when we've all paid that debt off. From there on out, the footnotes, not a whole lot to really talk about. All the footnote-ing for the pension system starts on page 25. It's all very dry and tedious. So if you think it's a tough read, you ought to try writing it. Page 36 shows a balance sheet and 37, a balance sheet or an income statement for all of our small funds, the little funds that got consolidated and rolled up a little while back. And the one thing that John beat me to was I was going to point out the cemetery fund that there was $201,000 worth of net equity left in there, but he got up here and beat me to it. So he stole my thunder. Page 38 and 39 is the report on government lodging standards. It's in two sections. The top half is internal control. The second half is compliance. We had no internal control issues at all with you guys and we had no compliance issues at all with you guys. Overall, very, very clean staff is always very, very easy to work with. You know, believe it or not, you may not think of it this way, but you are actually a pretty good side- a pretty good-sized city to work with, with, what did I say, sixty-six million dollars in assets. So it takes a little, a little bit of time to kick our way through all this, but the accounting records were always, always pretty good. Some of the better we deal with, and said staff is always very, very cooperative and always very helpful. Questions? Comments? Compliments? We take compliments. None? None, none, none?
Actually, one of the more dynamic, interesting presentations I've ever heard on this, so I commend you.
If it's not the highlight of the night, I'm upset.
Scott and the cemetery, you've got competition.
Yeah, see, that was tough to come behind. I didn't know what, it wasn't a lot to work with because it's the cemetery. I was thinking, you know, now, no cemetery jokes. No cemetery jokes. But actually, if you want to see a cemetery, go to Hugo. No, no kidding. They used to have circuses that would winter down there, and they've got all these huge monuments out there. It's really fascinating.
They have an outstanding cemetery, right?
Yeah, they've got, they've got a cemetery down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Phone numbers and email addresses are on the letterhead. If someone does have a question or a comment, please feel free to contact us. It's part of the fee. We're here till you run us off. We don't charge for that type of thing. It's not what we do. We're, you know, you paid me one fee, and I'm here till you tell me I can't come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to receive?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
You ever lost that, love?
Item four is a public hearing item. Consideration and possible improvement ordinance nineteen fifty-four, admitting the zoning at forty-three oh eight North Rockwell Avenue from CG Commercial General to PUD Planned Unit Development. The applicant has requested, they requested on February twenty-eighth that this item be tabled until a later date. That date would be March twentieth, the next council meeting. If there is anybody here that has come tonight to speak on this matter, I'd encourage you to come back on March twentieth so that everybody could be heard. Do I have a motion to table this until March twentieth?
So moved.
Please cast your votes. Item five, adoption of resolution number fifteen hundred determining the necessity of obtaining sewer easements for sanitary sewer, main, and public utility purposes in Northwest four of Section sixteen, T one-two. I don't even know how to read these things right here.
I'll finish it for you. That's Section sixteen, Township twelve north, Range four west, Indian Meridian, in blocks two and three, Neely, second edition, and block two, Oldfield edition, Bethany, Oklahoma, and directing the acquisition of these easements. I might, you may recall, we discussed this length at your last meeting, and you remember me telling you about a young lady who had to dig up her own sewer line in the neighbor's yard. She's here tonight on the second row there. That's Ms. Barton, and she's been a big help to the city in contacting the affected owners, and she's single-handedly obtained several of them, and she's gone with me on several cold calls to her neighbors. I don't know if she has anything to say to you. I think she can advise you of her feeling of the importance of this project, if you want to hear from her.
Would you like to address the council and the importance of?
So we're not back in nothing people's ear? Sure. I don't know what to say. I think we're just, I guess, where are we at on it? I think we just, we have a few more signatures.
Yeah, we're short three easements, and Ms. Barton has contacted one of them regularly. And one of them I've not been able to make any contact with. And the third one, we've made several contacts with, but they've not signed. The plan is that this resolution indicates that the council is serious about acquiring these easements and directs that they be acquired. However, my intention is if this resolution's adopted, I will send via certified mail a copy of this resolution to each of those three owners showing that, that the council is serious about proceeding, if necessary, to condemnation, and I won't take any further action without bringing back to you after that happens. So that's where we are at this point. I recommend this next step, to try to move this forward. We've been working on it almost a year now. Mr. Long, back there on the back rows, had the plans ready almost a year, and the project's just about ready to go, except for these three easements.
I move approval of resolution number fifteen hundred.
I'll second that with a big exclamation mark.
If I can make a comment, please.
And thank you, Meg.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been working on this, as you say, a year. I think we've been working on it close to two years, and it is a public improvement for that neighborhood, which is in great need. Now, we have three people that do not want to do this. That's twenty percent of the people that live on this line. And if we go to court, it's going to cost us additional money. They're going to want to be paid for their easement, which is going to improve their property immensely. And the major problems, if you don't put this line in, we're going to have a surcharge on our sewerage system, and the Department of Environmental Qualities will approach the City of Bethany, and we will have to go up and turn the water off in these locations, which is not a very pleasant thing to do. But, but I don't, I don't feel that the City of Bethany should go up and buy these easements and pay for them and spend the money to get it done. That's, that's just, you know, helping somebody out, and the city has wanted to do this. We're wanting to do it very badly, but these people are thumbing their nose at us, saying, "Pay me for, you know, coming across my property." And, and I just cannot reckon with that.
What do you suggest?
I suggest we just put it to bed and allow DEQ to come out and say, "Turn the water off."
We have a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote.
If they turn the water off, they're not just turning the water off, the three people that refuse to...
No, they'll turn the water off on the people who are surcharging, who have. But we are obligated to do that through state law, and if we don't do it, we will be fined horrendous amounts of money.
The unfortunate part of this whole thing is that the three people who have not signed are on a different sewer line, so it's really not, they wouldn't be the ones that their water would be turned off. It would be people like Ms. Barton and her neighbors.
Yes, and that's a tragedy. But the only thing it is, is as far as I'm concerned, is thirty pieces of silver.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? This is in the public interest. The city is here to provide services, especially sewer, to its residents. It's a primary responsibility we have, and I understand Councilman Shire's concerns, but for the purpose of paying for three easements as opposed to a fine from DEQ, I think we all know what will be less. It's unfortunate that it's come to this, but it's a required necessity. And with that in mind, I would ask the court, ask the court, ask the mayor to call for a vote on this particular ordinance.
I have a motion. I have a second. Please cast your votes.
And I'll follow the procedure that I suggested to you by mailing this to these people by certified mail, and I'll report back to you what effect that has.
And for the record, I would have been able to read that rigmarole in this thing right here had I finished law school or started law school, one of the two.
Perfectly answered, sir.
Item six, approval of purchase of one additional new Freightliner Business Class M two Leech two R, two twenty-yard capacity packer truck, including a semi-automated conversion kit from J and R Equipment Company through Oklahoma Central Purchasing. Do I have a motion? Or any debate or...
So we bought two trucks, and I guess they came in below state contract, but we haven't seen what those purchase prices were. So how much of our general budget do we have left to purchase this additional truck?
We are still under the amount that was in the budget originally for the two trucks. We can now get the third truck and the unit that pushes the trash can into the back. We can get three of them for the price of the two that we thought was going to be the price of the two. We're not adding any additional money to that.
And the reason for the difference was the fact that the original budget was for the fully-automatic packers, and the semi-automatics were less.
Mr. Harsman, I think you had sent out an email. That third truck, well, all the trucks will have that second axle. Is that correct?
Yes, they are both, they are all three dual-axle trucks.
Okay.
Well, all trucks have dual axles, at least three.
They're dual in the back. Yes, sir. I don't know that they call them tri-axle, but for you, we'll say tri-axle.
Is it a tandem axle?
It's a tandem axle, yes.
But we don't know the exact, we do not know the exact cost of these trucks?
I don't have that information available.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I vote for the approval of item number six.
That'd be a motion?
A motion for, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you very much. We'll get that truck ordered tomorrow.
Have the two trucks already been ordered?
Yes, sir.
But we're looking, we're going to order the other one tomorrow.
Right. He said that we should, that by ordering within the next week, we will get the same price, and we should be no more than three weeks behind.
And for the purposes...
And the two trucks will be, the City of Bethany, the original two trucks will be when?
We are shooting for June, at some time during June.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the benefit of the public, that means we're going to have semi-automated trash pickup, and we are purchasing those trucks, and we're also in the process of purchasing Polycarts. Is that true?
That is correct.
What's the timeline on the Policy Cart, or Polycarts?
I'm not sure what it is, but we won't, we won't get the Polycarts out until we have the trucks because the Polycarts don't do anybody any good till the trucks are ready to pick them up.
So, and Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that the residents know and are aware of the process that we're going about to get to that point, and we're going to have semi-automated trash pickup because that's one of the things I campaigned on, and I'm excited about it, and I think it'll be a really big improvement for the City of Bethany.
Right. I think it will be great improvement as just recently we got to watch, actually today, I saw several orphaned trashcans. No telling who they actually belong to. They were underneath, I saw one underneath a stairway at a business. I don't think it belonged there, but there's no, no telling who it actually belonged to. And whoever it belonged to, we did not steal it, so thank you.
Will these Polycarts, will they be registered per household? Are they numbered, or how's that work?
I believe they are going to be registered. They are, yeah. They will be registered, and we will keep track of the numbers, yes.
So nobody needs to spray paint their address on the side of the Polycart, correct?
Right.
Okay.
If you must, spray it on the inside of the door.
Are we not going to have to promulgate new regulations for trash?
Yes, we will.
Do you have that done yet?
No, the council will be involved in that.
We're ninety percent there, but there are some policy issues that City Council's going to have to side primarily with large items and yard waste and those kind of things.
Item seven, approval of contract with Scott Stearman for the library art sculpture.
That was in your agenda packet. I would suggest reading that would be a sure cure for insomnia, but if you have any questions about it, I'll be glad to answer it. The gist of it is, Mr. Stearman's going to develop the sculpture for the library. You've seen photographs and a miniature of it, and this contract handles the details of that project.
I did actually read that, and I make a motion to approve if you're ready, sir.
Please cast your votes. Item eight is a call to the public. If there's anybody that'd like to address the council, we'll have three minutes. Please step to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Jerry Freeman. I'm at seventy-five, twelve, Northwest Fortieth here in Bethany. We came tonight, I'm one-half of Freeman Properties. We came to address this issue with the lot there at forty-three oh eight North Rockwell. My father and I, we own the commercial property immediately south of that lot that is in discussion. We were going to speak greatly in negative for changing the zoning on that. That would have an adverse negative effect, we think, on our property. It would also deter anyone in the future from combining some properties through there to make an entire block of retail development at some point. I have a letter as such. I would like it entered into that file if it's possible, with y'all's agreement from my father and I. I also addressed, I know Mr. Sugar, Mayor Taylor, and my councilman at that time, Tom Ray, are no longer with us. When they changed the elevation and the drainage on that lot with all the excess dirt from the ONQ project, I called and talked to them extensively because we were not allowed to change any of the drainage on our current lot. We were told by the city without permits and a drainage report. Yet they raised that lot by three feet and drastically changed the drainage. And Mr. Sugar assured me that there would never be a building permit issued for that property until the drainage issues and the elevation were revisited and brought into compliance. I know that's been a long time ago, and things change, but I would speak very heavily. Please don't take a step backward and change from commercial on that property to some type of housing unit. Bethany doesn't need any more future rent houses. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Freeman, if you are able to come back on March the twentieth.
We'll find a way. I gave out Thunder tickets tonight. Club, no Thunder tickets.
Gilbert Carlson, twenty-six oh one North Rockwell. I'm on a honeydew list tonight, number one, to apologize to the Cemetery Committee folks that my wife can't be here. She directed me to send her apologies. She also directed me to thank those of you that showed up at the Friends of the Library book sale. We got an email the other day that the total involvement of volunteers at the book sale were eleven. were eleven hundred and twenty-three volunteers over the period of one year. Estimated number of hours, thirteen thousand nine hundred. And the revenue taken in from selling the majority of the million books that were available was two hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred. And a good portion of that money, of course, will come back to our local library. And I appreciate a couple of the council members that I saw struggling with their backpacks and so forth and spending their money there now. Robert, I expect next year that you'll be there and adding to that another two hundred dollars, and we would have hit last year's record. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Kathy Holloway, forty-three eleven North Beaver. I am against this project. I'm, I am really proud of Ward Two and how new houses have been built in the area over a long period of time. And I believe if we bring in more apartments, that would just beget more apartments. And I really do not want to squelch the forward movement of, of having single-family owner-occupied homes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Item nine is the city attorney's report.
All my items were on the agenda.
Item ten is city manager's report.
I just have a couple of things, very quickly, because we are like setting a record for getting out of here for a change. First thing I'd like to say is thank you to my wife for thirty-three years of wedded bliss. And I'm sorry I'm here tonight, but that's the way it works. At each of the council person's seats, I've left information in reference to the decline in the funding to the court. If you want to look at that, if you have any questions, you're welcome to contact Stacy at the court or contact me, or we can discuss it next week. I have also left information in reference to questions that were asked about code enforcement. Same thing, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to call me or we can discuss it next week if you'd like to. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven is council members' announcements, comments, and proposals tonight. Let's start down at Vice Mayor Nat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Steve's wife for sharing him on this thirty-third anniversary. Just a couple of things briefly, I jotted down. We have a time change, which is still happening this year. I think there's a bill before the legislature to talk about that. But with the time change, make sure that we check the smoke detectors, change the batteries in those. Want to do Chief Hunter's job on asking for that. The other thing is, right before we start, we have our next council meeting will be spring break, which is a kind of a double-edged sword. There will be no school zones in effect. However, there will be possibly kids in the streets all times during the day, so just keep an eye out for them, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shirey?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. McCutson?
I do. I would like to thank the Cemetery Task Force for what you're doing. That cemetery means a lot to me. Like I stated earlier, I have several family members in there. My in-laws are in there. I have a deputy sheriff brother-in-law that's buried in there. Many of you know Buddy Robertson, he's buried in there. And Ms. Barton, your efforts don't go unnoticed. And I'm in Ward Three, and I appreciate your efforts of what you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Herr?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pass along, I have received compliments from citizens in regards to the sidewalks being repaired at Elden Lion Park. And thank you for that. It's the small things like that that is definitely making our city better. Not only the sidewalks, but trimming back the trees on the lower portions. People feel it's much safer because they can see through now. And they, they notice that and appreciate that. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Todd?
Well, I don't know that we picked up on it, but JR just got a giant compliment tonight. And I want to recognize JR for your good work. Thank you, sir, did a good job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
I had sent a note to all of the council members asking for an online survey about recycling. And a couple of you responded, so I'm hoping that the rest of you will. And we can put something online on our social media pages, asking people who want curbside recycling to let us know and tell them what we think the cost will be on their monthly bill, because that's important to know too. And then hopefully that will offset some of our dumping fees as we continue to build Trash Mountain out there higher and higher and higher. And it can only go so high. So, just like to know how the residents feel about that.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the Cemetery Task Force. It's great to see citizen participation. You have a voice, and we want to give you an opportunity to allow that voice to be heard. Thank you, Meg, in Ward Two, for all of your hard work related to the Central Avenue project. I think that's going to be a step in the right direction. We've still got a lot of work to do in Ward Two, but progress is always good. And I would also like to take this opportunity in this forum to convey my support for the Oklahoma teachers. For some reason, we don't understand why this needs to be taken care of. And there's talk of a walkout. And I would like to tell the teachers of Oklahoma that you have my support. And your heart and interests are for the children of Oklahoma. And we understand that, and you will do the right thing. Hopefully, the state legislature and our governor will also come to their senses and do the right thing as well. So with that in mind, our hearts and our concerns go to you right now as you make this difficult decision.
Thank you.
Say one thing before we get started. I just had a question. For the last year or so, I've been sending out to the council various reports on legislative action. Does everybody want to continue to get that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I just didn't want to send that to you if you weren't interested in it, so.
All I have to say is, my beautiful wife and I made it home a little after ten PM last night from the tropical location of Minneapolis, Minnesota. We took off in the midst of a blizzard. Thankful that we made it home after what felt like a couple hours of de-icing the plane. But the reason why we were there was because our daughter, Madison, who is a junior at Mustang High School, she went to Mustang before I married her mama, and she wanted to go back to be on a bigger Palm squad. And that Minneapolis was, for whatever reason, the location they chose to go to Nationals.
Really good rates.
Yeah. Our daughter and her Mustang Palm High School team won two national titles. One in hip-hop and one in contemporary divisions. Just wanted to brag on her, thought that was awesome. She learned everything from me in regards to hip-hop dance. Just kidding, not, not at all. Item twelve is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, we're adjourned until March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is a consent docket, A through C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, we are adjourned until March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. With that, I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one is consent docket, A through C. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Do we have any new business? With no new business, we are adjourned until March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is consent docket, A through C. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. And with that, we are adjourned.